Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Brockton City Council meeting for November 13, 2023. A quorum being present. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk.
Item number one, acceptance of the minutes of the October 23, 2023, City Council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
Hearings. We have the petition of Lensum LLC of 3 Abrams Way-Holbrook for a garage license transfer located at 642 Crescent Street, Brockton, Mass. In City Clerk's office, September 19, 2023. Hearing assigned for November 13, 2023. Fire Department has no objections. All paperwork is on file.
The time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please give your name and address to the clerk.
Good morning, or evening, Chairperson. Scott Ford, the attorney, on behalf of the owner and the operator at this business. With me is Mr. Hashan Samzadeen. He's the owner, property owner, and Mr. Mohammed Awita, the operator of the business.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Do you have a statement you'd like to give to the council?
Yeah, very briefly, thank you, Chairperson. This is a site that was historically a Monroe muffler. Property changed hands right around the beginning of COVID. There's no change of use being proposed. We're just changing the licensee for the motor vehicle garage license to the property owner and the motor vehicle repair license to the operator. The operator has been there. I don't know if anyone's had the chance to go to the business. It's a very clean business as far as automotive repair shops go, you know? And we ask that the City Council vote favorably on the transfers.
Okay. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Attorney Ford and Mrs. Shandey, and thank you for your business here in Brockton. I did have the opportunity to speak with Attorney Ford prior to this hearing. The existing garage license has no current conditions on it, but, you know, we always just want to make sure that you're familiar with our ordinances and what your responsibilities are as a motor vehicle repair license holder. And I know Attorney Ford has gone over those documents with you. And so I appreciate your business. I have been by your shop. It's clean. It's orderly. I know you'll continue to make it so. And so, again, thank you for, you know, operating your business here in Brockton. And if there are no, no, we have to close out. So I, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who here who wishes to speak in favor of this garage license transfer? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition of this transfer? Okay, very good. I declare that portion of the hearing closed. The question comes on granting the license by a hand vote. All in favor. Anyone opposed? Thank you. It carries. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So stay right there.
We have one more.
Item number three, we have the petition of Huda Awanda of 163 Evans Street, Weymouth, Mass. for a motor vehicle repair mechanical license at 642 Crescent Street, Brockton, Mass. In City Clerk's office, September 19, 2023. Hearing assigned for November 13, 2023. Fire Department has no objections and all paperwork is on file.
The time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, give your name and address to the clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott Ford with the property owners and operator, present speaking in favor of the transfer.
Thank you. Would you like to make a statement?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Rest of my previous statement concerning the business.
Okay. Well, this is a motor vehicle repair, a mechanical repair license.
Correct, yeah. So the garage license, this is, the operator will be handling the repair business at the at the site.
Okay. Counselor Thompson, this is in your word?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I just reiterate what I stated prior for the garage license transfer. Well aware of what our ordinances are, and I have no objection to the granting of this license. Thank you.
Have you any additional stipulations?
No. The current license has no current stipulations on it. I'm comfortable with the ordinance as it exists, and so I'm not, I'm not seeking to add any stipulations to this license.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Counselor Azak.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a question. So who's Ms. Huda Awad? Is she the new?
Who does one of the other owners of the tenant business?
So is she part of Lensum LLC?
No, Lensum LLC is the property owner.
Okay. So, but she's with the gentlemen that are with you this evening?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in favor of this transfer? If not, I declare that portion closed. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this transfer? All right? If not, I declare that closed. The question comes on granting this license transfer by a hand vote. All in favor. Is anyone opposed? Thank you. It carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. President, thank you, members of the council.
Yes, no problem.
Mister Clerk.
Item number four, we have the petition of Afshin Realty, Javad Sheikh, of 11 Remdell Street, Number 2, Waltham, Mass. for a garage license transfer located at 800 Crescent Street, Brockton, Mass. In City Clerk's office, September 21, 2023. Hearing assigned for November 13, 2023. Fire Department has no objections. All paperwork is on file.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please give your name and address to the clerk.
I'm the former owner. I don't know, do I need to give my name?
If you're here in favor.
Michael C. Mather, Sr.
Okay.
Need my address?
Okay.
Yes, your address, please.
45 Belmont Court, Apartment 10, Brockton.
Thank you, sir.
02301.
Thank you. And sir, give your name.
Yes, my name is Javid Sheikh. I own the Afshin Realty. My address is 11 Remdell Street, Waltham, Massachusetts, 02453.
Okay. Did you get that, Diane? Great. And how about the young man?
My name is Chase Mather. I live at 45 Belmont Court in Apartment 10.
Thank you, Mr. Mather. Is there a statement that you'd like to make in support of this transfer of the license?
Well, I'm the former owner of 800 Crescent Street. We've owned it since 85, and Javad bought it about three, four years ago. And in the middle of changing the licenses, COVID came about. It kind of got tied up in the paperwork. We either forgot or whatever. So now we're coming to clean everything up to make sure it's right, that the city clerk has all the information and the permits are up to date.
Well, I'm certainly pleased to hear you're doing that. Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mrs. Sheikh and Mr. Mather. Great to see you again. I have no objection to the transfer of this garage license. It's an orderly and clean operation over at 800 Crescent. I know there is, we did speak about the need to come back for a motor vehicle repair license. I understand that you're in the process of putting that paperwork together and so that we can kind of close out all the licenses on this property. So I know we'll work together to accomplish that. But again, this is a great location. We appreciate you operating your business here in Brockton, and I see, I request the council approve this transfer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there anyone else here in favor of this transfer? If not, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition of this transfer? Okay. I declare that portion of the hearing closed. The question comes on granting this license by a hand vote. All in favor. Anyone opposed? Thank you. It carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Didn't stay there, though.
Item five, we have the petition of Afshin Realty, Javad Sheikh, of 11 Remdell Street, Number 2, Waltham, Mass. for a flammable storage license transfer located at 800 Crescent Street, Brockton, Mass. In City Clerk's office, September 21, 2023. Hearing assigned for November 13, 2023. The fire department has no objections. All paperwork is on file.
The time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please state your name and address for the clerk.
I'm in favor. Michael C. Mather, Sr., 45 Belmont Court, Apartment 10, Brockton, 02301.
Thank you, sir.
And my name is Javid Sheikh, Afshin Realty, and 11 Remdell Street, Waltham, Massachusetts. I'm in the favor.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Chase Mather. I live at 45 Belmont Court, Brockton, Massachusetts. I am in favor.
Thank you. Is there any additional statement you'd like to make, gentlemen?
I just think it's the same as the statement before. We're trying to get the paperwork all straightened out, which got kind of confusing during the COVID.
Of course.
And we want to make everything up to date.
That's right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I just reiterate everything I said prior to all the paperwork. This location has been inspected by the fire department. They've signed off on it. I'm satisfied with the license, so I seek the approval of this council on this transfer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I just wanted to ask, what is the flammable, what are we storing that's flammable?
Well, it's a gas station, so they're storing gasoline. Also, in the, in the building next door, they're storing oil.
Okay. Thank you.
Oil and gas.
Anyone else have questions? Is there anyone else here in favor of this? Okay, we declare that portion closed. Is there anyone here in opposition of this transfer? And we will declare that portion of the hearing closed. Now, the question comes on granting this license by a hand vote. All in favor. Anyone opposed? Thank you. It carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening.
Item number six, we have the petition of Richard and Larry McLaughlin of 36 Reservoir Street, Avon, Mass. for a flammable storage above ground license transfer located at 157 Clinton Street, Brockton, Mass. In City Clerk's office, August 11, 2023. Hearing assigned for November 13, 2023. Fire Department has no objections. All paperwork is on file.
The time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please give your name and address for the clerk.
Good evening, Madam President. Attorney Jake Creedon, 71 Legion Parkway, Brockton. With me is Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Lynch. The property was the former property of Scudder Oil. Presently, the tanks, the big tanks are in the above ground that we're looking for, have been removed to put in brand new ones pending this application. There are three fuel oils there. One is known as household. The other one is diesel. And the third one is called, again, off-road. And these gentlemen tell me that is something that is another form of heating oil for various buildings. That's been in business, Scudder, and then for over 50 years. Again, new tanks, if this is approved, will be installed, all up to code, obviously, and new safety regulations with it. That's basically all I can say. Permissions have been granted by both Davis Scudder and Mr. Lynch for Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Comments? Is anyone else here in favor of this transfer? If so, come forward. No one else is here, literally. Declare that portion closed. Is anyone here in opposition? No, we'll declare that portion closed. This property on Clinton Street is located in Ward 4, which of course is my ward. And I understand at one time, Scudder had both properties, which are now subdivided. Part is owned by Mr. Lynch, part by Mr. McLaughlin. And you will work together, gentlemen, I understand.
Hundred percent.
And the, and the tanks will be on Mr. McLaughlin and his brother's property?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Is there anyone else? I'm sorry. Question is on granting the license by a hand vote. All in favor. Anyone opposed? Thank you. It carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Every minute. I was going to say, congratulations to all our incumbents. Apparently, you're doing everything right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Item number seven, we have the report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of October 30, 2023.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from, from the mayor informing the City Council that Dr. Mary Brophy of Crescent Street, Brockton, Mass. is resigning as a member of the Board of Health effective October 18, 2023.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Director of the Council on Aging submitting, submitting a letter of resignation on behalf of Daniel and Irene Clegg, who reside at Bellevue Ave, Brockton. Mr. and Mrs. Clegg have been lifelong supporters of the Council on Aging and are seniors since our building was built in 2001. They have both been very instrumental in the success of our center and strong advocates for our older adults. Unfortunately, attending monthly meetings has become too much for them, and they are requesting at this time they be removed from the board so that others can fill their seats.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of $5,000 from Hawkeye Fence. This donation will allow for a fence to be installed around the marvelous Marvin Hagler statue.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Director of Animal Control requesting payment for a fiscal year 23 invoice for New England Animal Medical Center dated March 12, 23 for $324.98 from the fiscal year 24 budget, org code line item 02920075, object code 538800, Veterinary Services.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, Section 53A, recommending that the City Council authorize the appropriation and expenditure of the grant award in the amount of $17,196,926.76 from Plymouth County to unappropriated estimated receipts American Rescue Plan, Plan Act, ARPA Fund.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with the provisions and stipulations of Section 53E and a half of Chapter 44 of the Mass. General Laws and the annual reauthorization of the Comcast Revolving Fund, requesting that the City Council authorize an expenditure of approximately $800,000 to complete renovations and audiovisual improvements at the Brockton High School Auditorium, more commonly known as the Nelson Auditorium. The mayor shall comply with reporting requirements for revolving funds of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, and with the reporting requirements of the contract with Comcast.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting to accept and authorize the expenditure of a grant award, a grant awarded to the city of Brockton in the amount of $80,000. This grant is pursuant to the Green Communities Act in support of the Massachusetts Solid Waste Master Plan, to which Mass. DEP has awarded the city a sustainable material recovery program grant under the Recycling Dividends Program, RDP. The RDP program provides payments for municipalities that have implemented specific programs and policies proven to maximize reuse, recycling, and waste production, and incentives to improve their recycling programs. The city is not required to provide any kind of matching funds.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Director of Planning and Economic Development informing the City Council that 380 Quincy Street LLC, Mather, is selling the property it owns to 380 Quincy Street, Brockton, Mass. to Quincy Street LLC, and seeks the city's approval to assign a tax increment exemption agreement to the new owners.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Traffic Commissioner respectfully requesting the City Council approve the authorization to expend fiscal year 24 funds for the following invoices that were received after the close of fiscal year 23. From Traffic Commission Purchase of Services Engineering, $5,670; to CDM Smith, $5,670. From Traffic Commission Purchase of Services Public Safety, $2,059.64; to the City of Brockton Tax Collectors, $2,059.64. From Traffic Commission Goods and Services Traffic Lines and Signs, $6,449.72; to K-5 Corporation, $6,449.72.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council authorize the creation of the Economic Development Revolving Fund, provided that no more than $500,000 may be expended during fiscal year 2024.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Unfinished business. We have the appointment of Van McCormick of Brockton, Mass. to the Council on Aging as an alternate member for a three-year term ending October 2026. In City Council, October 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Azak?
Yes.
Diagastino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed.
We have the appointment of Gerald D. Colch of Brockton, Mass. to the Council on Aging as an alternate member for a three-year term ending October 2026. In City Council, October 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Azak?
Yes.
Diagastino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed.
We have the appointment of Janet Trask of Brockton, Mass. to the Commission on Human Rights, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for a three-year term ending October 2026. In City Council, October 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Azak?
Yes.
Diagastino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order that the following names' sum be in the same as hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows. Appropriation of $288,205.86 from police fiscal year 23 full-time salaries, $288,205.86; to police fiscal year 24 personal services overtime, $288,205.86 retroactive payment. Excuse me, that was part of personal services overtime retroactive payment. For the purposes of funding the Brockton Police Patrolmen's Association contract, this appropriation provides funding for one year, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, of a three-year contract. In City Council, October 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable as amended.
The question is on adoption as amended by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Azak?
Yes.
Diagastino?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The order is adopted as amended.
Item resolved. Whereas the updated property valuations for real property in the city have been certified and also published on the city's website, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Assessors and representatives from the vendor paid by the city to review and establish updated property values for fiscal year 2024 be invited to a meeting of the Finance Committee of the City Council in November to fully discuss the methodology and data elements applied to this annual process. In City Council, October 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a hand vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. The resolve is adopted.
Item 38, resolved. Be it resolved by the Brockton City Council to invite the Chief Financial Officer, Troy Clarkson, to provide information and a detailed review of the city's and school department's fiscal year 23 final expenditures and fiscal year 24 year-to-date expenditures. In City Council, October 10, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The resolve is adopted.
Item 39, resolved. Whereas for fiscal year 2024, beginning on July 1, 2023, there are vacant but funded positions within the city government, including the school department. And whereas it is prudent to identify those positions which will not be filled for several months because of recruitment, background checks, required training programs, and other to address outstanding obligations. Be it resolved, the Chief Financial Officer attended a meeting of the City Council to discuss the potential transfer of funds currently allocated to vacant positions. Such funds to be transferred to a school department, a school deficit reserve fund or fund by similar title. In City Council, October 10, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? The resolve is adopted.
Item 40, resolved, be it resolved that Mary Waldron of the Downtown Brockton Business Association and Amanda Glennan, Chairwoman of the Brockton Holiday Celebration and Parade, or their designees be invited to come before the Finance Committee to discuss the Brockton Holiday Celebration and Parade, to be held on Saturday, November 25, 2023. In City Council, October 23, 2023. Read and refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a hand vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, the resolve is adopted.
Item 41, ordinance, an ordinance creating a revolving fund pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, that the following language be adopted as a general law, Chapter 44, the following, excuse me, the general language be adopted as the City of Brockton ordinance. The Economic Development Revolving Fund shall be created. Programs or activities for which the Economic Development Revolving Fund may be expended shall be consistent with purposes for economic development in the city of Brockton. Receipts of payments of transfers and payments of fees for the purpose of supporting economic development and planning projects in the city of Brockton shall be credited to the Economic Development Revolving Fund. Expenditures from the Economic Development Revolving Fund shall be made on the authority and direction of the Chief Financial Officer, provided that no more than $500,000 may be expended from the Economic Development Revolving Fund during fiscal year 2024. The Brockton Chief Financial Officer shall comply with the reporting requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half.
Refer to ordinance.
Orders, order that the City Council authorizes the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $5,000 from Hawkeye Fence to the Department of Public Works Highway Division. The donation will be used to build a fence around the marvelous Marvin Hagler statue.
Refer to finance.
Order, in accordance with the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council approve the expenditure of $324.98 from animal control purchase of services, $324.98 veterinary services fiscal year '24, to New England Animal Medical Center, $324.98.
Referring to finance. Counselor?
Madam President, I move suspension of the rules and that we act on this tonight to pay that bill for $324.98. Second.